We're going to call this meeting starting at six thirty one, it's thirty one. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I have a couple amendments. One is that we are on our agenda, we can eliminate time scheduled appointments A and B because we actually did that in August. And so do we need to vote on that? I guess we do. Well, actually, we'll motion to adopt it at the end. And also, there is a possibility of a vote on appointments to the regional hub building, build working group tonight, so I'm just going to change that. We'll come up during the time of the working groups. Time. So is there a motion to amend the agenda as proposed?
One question?
Yes.
Did we add that letter that we were looking at?
I don't think we need to vote on it, though. But all right, we'll have one more. As Sherry said, be big enough to err on the side of caution.
We should vote.
Okay, we'll be voting on that. So there's a letter that you received late this afternoon. And it will be discussed again during the working group time to speak to decoupling finances at the the buildings from the buildings budget. So that would be another potential vote. Is there amended to make this amended agenda to pass?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John. Thank you. All in favor of amending the agenda as proposed, please indicate yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, very well. All right, this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody from the public who would like to speak, you have a two minute time limit. And just make your hand no longer zoomed or in the room. Okay, so no comment, thank you. Then we will go into the reports, starting with superintendent.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. I'm going to be brief because we have a major presentation of mine that we're excited to share as a leadership team. Just wanted to recognize on the twenty first, Jen Settle and I met with our new faculty to review our graduate and strategic plan, really impressive groups from all over the world. Great representation, a lot of different perspectives. They're excited about this team. The next day, on the twenty second, we brought the entire faculty and staff to the auditorium. Not the most beautiful of places, but we did have an amazing celebration with a couple of of ovations, sending ovations for the amount of student outcomes, as well as the middle school receiving of national recognition. One new piece of work that we brought on this beginning of the school year is Raina and I are beginning what we're calling the MDSU Life Learning Series. So bringing topics that are really important beyond the school day to our faculty and staff and bringing these speakers. Our first round of meetings will be on caring for aging parents. We've had some really good response. We hope once we have a schedule, I'll be working with Carla Camel, who's our community care coordinator. Once we have days and times, we'll open it up on a list serve and hopefully bring in other members of the community on these topics and others. So another opportunity to bring more people into our district and to recognize the needs of our faculty and staff that are, you know, be more than serving our students and community.
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions or comments for Sherry? All right. I'll invite any of the directors who would like to speak to their reports to be, you're welcome to do that, but if you don't wish to do that, that's fine, too. Anybody out there?
I'll share.
All right, go ahead, Jen.
So you'll hear from me about the annually recognition from the middle school in a minute, and that's a large part of my report. But I did want to speak to one aspect, which is the Holocaust and human rights work that happened this summer. So that's the third piece within my report. So to make you all aware, we had teachers travel to Europe with the Keen Center for Holocaust Studies, the Cohen Institute is what it's called, to learn about the Holocaust and human rights during World War Two, to bring those experiences back to our students. And so this summer, we spent time building a curriculum that we felt represented their experience while they were in Europe and also would allow our students to access a wonderful pathway of learning about the Holocaust and human rights. And so within the packet, I described what that looks like, and it is an independent studies pathway, similar to the craft pathway. We hope to be able to pilot it this spring, though we still have many logistics to work out. But the idea of the pathway is that throughout their time taking required coursework through social studies and English, they learn about the baseline information related to the Holocaust, and if they want to take a deeper dive, they can. And so we have two independent studies that we've developed, and we're hoping to make this come to light this spring. So I just wanted to share that work.
I just wanted to comment that Jen invited me to take a look at the pathway towards the end of the summer, and it was terrific, and because of the continuity that we had presentations here at had the committee here about Holocaust and what was needed. So I thought it was terrific. It was really great.
It really is an impressive body of work and the collections of courses and the ability to explore really difficult topics in a very creative way through self-discovery is just exciting opportunity to offer our students and faculty as well. So thank you, and thank you, your team.
Yes, I was gonna say, thanks to the teachers, they did some great work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment or question for Jen? Jen, I just wanted to say that as a curriculum director, it must have been a very fulfilling experience working on that curriculum. I read it this afternoon, reviewed it again, and it just looks like a really interesting and exciting way to learn. But especially for those students who enjoy the independent strands. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
And to those teachers as well.
Thank you. The craft pathway was definitely the inspiration for that, and I can see many more happen over time.
Great. Anybody else? Any other directors? All right, then. Lila, you have some comments to make.
Yay. So August twenty eighth, the YO theater performed the preview for the twenty twenty five season with excerpts from Electra, Alice by Heart, Treasure Island, and Pride and Prejudice. Work on Electra began last Monday, a Greek tragedy imbued with music and core work, which is so exciting. Anne Carson's translation of Electra is a revival of a timeless classic. Also, I've collected opinions from my theaters on several of the more recent changes. One thing I was excited about is that people are pretty happy with the social atmosphere after the yonder couches. I don't think most of the people I talked to were not frustrated with not having their phones out. They are a little concerned about the practicality. So people are just thinking about like safety and emergency, five or four plan violations, and not being able to use phones as teacher-proof learning tools. And everyone said this is sort of a way to think about what are our alternatives, where can we find those? For bathroom passes, everyone I talked to mentioned that the single-use paper feels pretty wasteful and laminated reusable passes seem unsanitary. To spit up what they said a little bit. So some people proposed a lot of alternatives, including teacher-managed sign-up sheets and students having personal reusable passes. And then the leak policy. Most people expressed preference for a little more relaxed enough policy up to teacher interpretation. They're worried about distance classes and generally other distancing circumstances.
All right, thank you. And then I see that Wakiin also has had told us previously, but has taken a step down from the board because of his interest in becoming a firefighter. And of course, the classes are on Mondays, I think Wednesdays is a lot of his time. So we will be actively seeking a new student to join the board. Lila, if you have any suggestions, feel free, you can either send them to Sherry or me or both of us and John. And but we do have an application form for that. Great. Any comments or questions for the student representative? All right, thank you.
I have one comment.
Oh, sure.
I heard from a collection of dozen students, who's my sources anonymous, that the yonder pouches have been effective in the sense that people aren't texting that much during school, but they're not really being used. So I was wondering if we really have to pay for them in the future. But just to flag, that's what I heard. I also heard that people can text on their laptops if they have that ability. And so it's sort of like there's been like a surprising like this inequity in terms of who's been a pet or not.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, people can text from their laptops if they have a personal laptop. It doesn't really work on Chromebook. I have my Chromebook. I will say for the yonder couches, people not using them, people aren't really using them. But I also think it was like a psychological stepping stone to just having the phone away.
Yeah.
Because I think if you're thinking that my phone is supposed to be in my yonder couch, you're not like slipping it out of your bag to like covertly test or anything. It's just, it's supposed to be there. So even if I have my phone in my bag, it's not in the pouch, you're still thinking it's not supposed to be out at all. You're not like sneaking any glances at it. So I think it's been effective, even if the yonder pouches themselves weren't like blatantly necessary to get where we wanted to go.
Effective return.
It was an effective return, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. All right. We're going to move into the time scheduled appointments, and the first one is the presentation and adoption of the fiscal twenty six capital improvements plan. Lees, do? Jim, can you share that?
Why don't you share that? So real quickly, Joe and I have been working on updating the capital improvements plan we presented to the board, I think, two years ago now. We presented it two years ago to both finance and the B and G committee. We've updated it to reflect new projects either we've become aware of or especially at the high school, middle high school, because the new build failed a year ago. We've now put some projects on the schedule for the middle high school that need to get done for when he stays in that building. Keep in mind that a capital improvements plan is a plan. And I guarantee you, the day after you adopt it, it will change. It's a dynamic process. Nothing gets cast into stone, and it's not a real hard stone, until you develop a budget, the voters approve a budget. And so all it is, it lays out a plan of how we think we're going to address the capital needs, mostly building and grounds, but not exclusively building and grounds of the district. One of the focuses that we do is Joe goes out and figures out what needs to get done and when it needs to get done. He spends a lot of time talking to the principals, talking to vendors, figuring those things out. Then we sit together and we say, but our bottom line is we don't want this plan to cost any more than X. We want it to stay at X each year as we go forward. So we don't want it to be a million six this year, three million next year, you know, half a million the following year. We want it to be steady, so the tax rate impact is steady. And so what we do as we, as Joe and I cross out these plans, then what we do is we shift them from year to year to balance the budget so that it stays at about the same impact. And we may do a five million dollar project this year, but because its funding is financed over ten years, the impact is not five million dollars in any given year. And so that's what Joe and I did. What you see on the appear is in our plan, there's a page that says, what is the capital improvements plan? I kind of already just went through that. So what we've done is we've gone through building by building, and let me see if I can make that bigger than you can see it. And these are the types of projects. So you can see the projects we have scheduled for Redding, the projects we have scheduled for this building, the projects we have scheduled for Proster Valley. And so we go through this building by building and schedule all these projects. And some were scheduled because there's only so many hours in the summer that Joe and he can do work. Others are pushed out because there's only so much money to go around, and that's all we can afford to do that year. When you're looking down this one, and this is the high school one, you can see about a third of the way down in the column just to the right of the highlighted green, you can see it says GFGF, then it says BS, which is a bond sale. And then there's something that's highlighted, it says CRF, capital reserve funds. So that's identifying our source of the money to do the projects. And that is important because as we go through to our way to pay for it, you can see at the top of this document that just popped up from the screen that anything that is a bond sale is spread out over multiple years. So you only see in any given year the cost that is impacting the budget that year for financial impact. So even though we may be doing a five million dollar project, it's spread out over a number of years. And so you only see the part that is impacting in each year. What I want to take you through, and there's lots of data, so what I want to do is take you through to a project sheet and have Joe walk you through a project sheet.
May I just ask, good, just a couple of foundational questions. What is a criteria for something that's in here? It seems like there's a mix of things. Is there a minimum size for a project?
A project has to be at least five thousand dollars and have a useful life of more than eighteen months. Okay. So a vehicle.
Yeah.
A server might make it. Servers are now around five grand. So if it's a four thousand nine hundred dollar server, it doesn't count. If it's an eight thousand dollar server, it counts.
And just as a refresher to me and to the board, in municipal finance, we have capital funds that are established by voters, and that money is able to be carried over year after year. Do we have the equivalent here?
We have the capital reserve funds here. I'm happy to share with you, you're new to the board, the list of what we have for capital fund, capital reserve funds. We've not put any money in the capital reserve funds since we merged. It's all actually things that we brought in from the
For their balances.
The town schools. We've got a little over, I think, six hundred eighty thousand dollars in the capital reserve funds.
And so what this outlines is an annual appropriation based on the need that you had mapped based on the assessments.
And it may be it may be part of this year's budget, so it's part of this year's tax rate. It may be a bond sale that will require voter approval. It may be pulling stuff from capital reserves. When we did the energy project, Joe had not only the capital lease, but he also had a bunch of grants coming in from efficiency, authority, or other things that, so we may have multiple funding sources spreading project.
Excellent, thank you.
I think what we want to point out here is each of these projects have justification seats. So there's a copy of this, and it's in the board book, but each project has a little paragraph justifying why it was needed. It'll give, it'll be a description of each one, its price tag, and I can't see from here, but it looks like some
That's the pregame playground.
All right, that's the yeah, the Barn playground, which is just completed. And a justification for that is we were required to have a playground for K to pre-K kids. They couldn't come in with the larger kids. So each project, as I said, has a justification seat. And I think what I want to reiterate to is what Jim said here, that this is a living document. It changes depending on issues that come up, what's priority, what isn't. So it'll also change too over the years just because of pricing. I found that this year, a lot of the pricing that we've had for the past two years, the twenty somewhat percent we added to our projects, thinking of inflation, have been totally blown out of the water. So things do change, things get pushed around. Most of it is priority based. You know, we have windows that need to be replaced, that's priority. We have some issues that are happening here at the high school right now that we're going to have addressed here in the near future, probably within the next year. That's going to cause some projects to get pushed into different years.
So the project sheet I have up there now is a Killington Elementary School mechanical gear analyst replacement project. It's already been engineered. We'd hope to pay for it with some of the PESR funds, the project, which we originally expected to be five to seven hundred thousand, came in a million and a half. And so we've pushed it out, and this shows, for instance, the budget impact over a ten-year bond. Because I'm proposing that we do it as a ten-year bond. You as a board make those decisions. This is the recommendation coming from, from me on the finance side, and Joe is the one that's recommending the project for all the reasons in the justification. Okay. One of the things that's really important, and the reason this is an action item, is part of the requirements of the Department of Ed is that we have a functioning capital improvements plan in order to be part of our process when we go for a new building. They want to make sure that we're taking care of the buildings we have. And although we presented one two years ago, I believe, you as a board, we didn't push you to adopt it, you didn't adopt it. I'm asking you to now adopt this sort of plan so that we have the document, both one more tool in our package of things that we're we have when we go to the Department of Ed, keep pushing to move forward with building.
But it doesn't mean any appropriation at this point, it's just a plan.
It's a commitment to a plan.
It's a commitment to an asset.
It's not a financial commitment.
A guide.
And for instance, Joe has become aware of, and I'm happy to share pictures if you really want to see of how far the sewer pipes underneath the middle high school area. And we will probably be bringing to you as part of the budget process, a warrant article for a project somewhere between half a million and a million dollars to horizontally bore or jackhammer the hallways in the school, so you're in place the sewer pipes that are rusted through and were down to ground. And as we get more information, Joe will bring that to this B and G committee. We're hoping they don't have something this month, but definitely by October. And that's a project that can't wait. We can't keep going this way for four years. It'll take to get a new building built.
These are, these are the waste lines that are connected to the cafeteria. So periodically, it's probably every few months or so, they get clocked. We sent a camera down to take a look at it. We actually tried to eliminate some of the buildup that was in there, and the pipes are just so far gone, we weren't able to actually do much there. There to the point where as Sherry likes to say, we're one flush away, we're probably there. We can get away with closing bathrooms, but we can't get away with closing the cafeteria they want in the school.
So that's something we already know, but it, we became aware of recently enough that we haven't yet incorporated into the capital group, and we don't know what we're talking about yet. We will assume, we don't yet.
Go ahead, Matt.
Can I make a motion to adopt the capital plan?
I'll second that motion.
We open it to discussion. So I'll make a quick comment, having served on Buildings and Ground and Finance Committee, this tool is very, very helpful. It's non-binding, it's flexible, but it's a, it's a planning tool. And so when it comes time to pick what projects go into this year's budget, we will already have a list of projects that are needed, and each project has an individual memo with a justification. And that way, you're not starting all over at the beginning of the planning year, you know, with everybody listing the projects they want and trying to fight over priorities because you've had this for five years and you've been methodically picking what projects to do. So that's my input.
Can I make a comment, Jen?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to I built a capital plan for the town Killington, and it was, I think the other thing that I learned, took away from the process, is that now everyone will know what's being considered. And so it's like a transparency document, and it's a participation document so that everyone can actually have awareness and input as to what gets worked on. So I'm definitely for it. It's, it'll help us during the budget, budget a lot.
Any other comments from the board? All right, then I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving this document, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much to Joe and Jim and everybody else who's worked on it with Buildings and Grounds. Thank you. All right. The next we have a MDSU presentation.
Before we go into that presentation, I want to introduce the board to our new assistant principal, Chris Lanzalata, who is our first stage night here, and welcome. You can tell he's new because he's got a tie from the board. Thank you, Chris. It is a long commute. So let me open this up for Sharon. So the start of every school year is the job of a leadership team to present the vision for the upcoming school year. So the leadership team decided to put together a presentation with some arm twisting from me regarding what we see as our priorities for this work. Members of the leadership team will be participating in this presentation, so it won't be just my voice. But in order to make our plan for the next school year, was it really important to reflect on who we are as MDSU and the priorities we have? And also a really important opportunity to celebrate the work we've been doing over the last four and five years. So I'm going to make this small, if that's okay. Thank you. So we are Mount View Supervisory Union. We are five elementary schools. We have a commitment to full-time public pre-K. We have one middle and high school. We have around a thousand students, two hundred and fifty faculty and staff building a strong foundation where our scores are well above the Vermont State averages for proficiency in literacy, math, and science. And we're centered on student family, education, and community relationships. Our community is communities and schools. We have Barnard Academy, Killington Elementary, Prosper Valley School, Reading Elementary, Woodstock Elementary, and Woodstock Union Middle and High Schools. I have to be careful because I tend to talk rather through that.
Hi, I'm Melissa Zorhaid, I'm the principal at Barnard Academy. And our school is a preschool through sixth grade where students truly thrive. We build our foundation on strong relationships and a positive culture where mistakes become learning opportunities, curiosity is celebrated, and every student feels valued for their unique contributions. We're just sixty-five students across four multi-grade classrooms. Our intimate setting allows something special to happen. Our students aren't just learners, they're explorers, critical thinkers, leaders, and active community members. Our experienced teaching staff brings decades of educational wisdom to each classroom. This deep expertise allows us to truly know each student and to adapt their instruction for their individual needs. And we're experts at maximizing our learning time. This is so true. We're creating a space for the enriching experiences for learning to come alive. And we have some unique things to offer. We do two annual whole school musicals each year. We have many, many field trips. We span from our local Silver Lake that's within walking distance to Washington DC. And we just bring the world into our curriculum. We've spent like a whole day some summers just trying to match up, how do we have a field trip that fits right with the curriculum that we're offering and our learning that we want to have for students this, that year. We also pride ourselves in weekly outdoor place-based learning experiences for students. And ours, just our whole staff is so excited about preparing our students to go on for the rest of their lives, being lifelong learners and being uh, go on for the rest of their lives, being lifelong learners and being confident and kind and just ready to lead in this world. And I so truly believe that in Barnard. It's an incredible school. So I'm so happy to be part of that.
Thank you.
Okay. I am Mary Guggenberger and I am the principal at Killington Elementary School. And we are proud to have a brand new vision statement this year. Last year, a group of teachers and I worked together to sift out who we really are. We are yetis. But we are, um, our vision is for every student to meet their summit to success. And our new mission statement gets us there. Our mission is to cultivate an environment that provides a sense of belonging and community, fosters growth mindsets, and supports all learners on their journey to success. We are right at the base of Killington Resort and we celebrate that. Every day, we love being in the mountains. We get outside. We have a one-mile nature trail that we do a lot of outdoor learning on. Um, we have our sugar grove out there and our maple sugar shack, which is not in the picture. Sorry to say, but we do, we do a lot of outdoor experiences and we also appreciate the arts and uh, musicals in our school. We're so fortunate to be right at the base of Killington Mountain. We can take our entire school K through six skiing for seven uh, weeks in a row up at Killington and they partner with us to make it happen for every single child. So we're, we're excited to be where we are in Killington and we're excited to promote our new vision this year.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Devin Workman. I'm the principal of Prosper Valley. Um, I just wanted to thank Chris for the tie. I did not go there, but I wear a tie every day except for Friday. Friday is Felt on Friday if you don't know. Um, at Prosper Valley, we've got a lot to offer as well. Um, the top right picture is a picture from last year's harvest supper, which is back on. Believe it or not, it was, it was like about a week where we didn't think it was going to happen, but um, talk about community. Prosper Valley, um, has been working through the harvest supper for many, many years. Um, my speech for a different night has the number for you. Um, this is the first weekend of October every single year where community comes together all the way from students being your servers to the community cooking your turkey. Um, this is, this is a really great community experience and I highlight this because one, it's coming up soon. And two, I've worked in a lot of schools and a lot of districts and I've never seen a community event quite like this one. Um, Prosper Valley has a lot to offer. We do have a quick little picture of our sugar shack there. Um, we do sap and syrup every year. We have an observatory that does amazing art photography. Um, retired teacher Rob Hanson comes and he can't get enough. He can't get away. He keeps coming back to help us out. Um, we have a challenge for us on our campus as the last three years. We have four low ropes in the woods and five high elements in the gym. This is a really great opportunity for us. We've already gotten two classes climbing this year. Um, this is a great team building thing at the beginning of the year, but also really great celebrations of learning throughout. At Prosper Valley, we really pride ourselves on being the only intermediate school in the district. Um, having worked in many K through six schools in this district, there's something really special that happens at Prosper Valley where we are really allowing middle school type experiences to happen at a younger age, which has often come with a lot of middle school mistakes. And with that, we really get to take the teaching and learning approach before the big school, as we call it, um, and get to teach a lot of great skills for our students. Um, we are at six homerooms this year, three fifth grade and three sixth grade. We have a hundred and eleven students at Prosper Valley. We can't take many more. Um, we are burst at the seams, but it is with full of joy. Um, we have six homeroom teachers and of those homeroom teachers, um, all very unique in their own ways and all have really great superpowers to offer to our kids. So Prosper Valley is a really special place that I hope I get to be at for a long time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Rank. I'm not wearing the tie tonight. I am the interim principal and special educator for Reading Elementary School. I forgot what I was going to say. You might know us as the smallest school within MBSU, but at Reading, we like to say that our size is our strength. In a school, um, in the size of Reading Elementary School, every child is known. Every family is connected and every story matters. I asked staff to share all of their favorite photos and I think they really highlight the natural beauty that surrounds Reading. We have acres of forest, meadows, and trails, but the real beauty is inside the school. We have a staff that's not only a veteran staff, but they care so deeply. They make strong connections with all families and they are able to provide personalized learning to every child. One of our students captured it better than I could ever say last week when they said, you know, in fairy tales when they say happily ever after, well, that's how I feel about my life. That sense of joy and belonging is what defines Reading Elementary School and it's what makes small schools special.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maggie Mills, principal over at Woodstock Elementary School. Like Reading, we are a pre-K to fourth grade school. Unlike Reading, we are a big school. We are the big city school of the elementaries. I like to joke, we're nestled right in the heart of the village of Woodstock. And we are focused on our vision of cultivating compassionate, empowered learners. We do that through our mission of providing a strong foundation and fostering perseverance and belonging. Some of the ways that we do that start in our robust sixty-child preschool program where we lay the groundwork as a, as a place to begin those foundational skills of social, emotional health and wellness and learning and lay the groundwork for academic success there with some pre-academic skills. From there, we build up to our fourth graders. You can see our fourth graders um, on the right there. They end their time in fourth grade at Woodstock Elementary School by producing a Shakespeare play. So we go all the way from the early learning up to Shakespeare in their time at Woodstock Elementary. We really emphasize belonging through partnering with families, bringing families into the school and partnering with them. We also emphasize belonging through the role our school plays in the Woodstock community. We're able to get out a lot, whether it's preschoolers walking to the post office or taking a tour of the different clock towers in the community or first graders walking to Billings Farm to learn about tools for work and play. We are proud to be situated right in the heart of a community that offers so much place-based learning for our students. And we are also proud to have teachers that work on strong teams. We have at least two teachers at every grade level and they work really hard to offer strong teaming, partnering with unified arts teachers as well, special educators, reading interventionists, math interventionists, and the parent educators to make sure we're providing the strongest possible opportunities for the students in our school.
Thank you.
Right. So good evening, everyone. I'm Aaron St. Jimenez, the principal of Woodstock, Middle School and High School. Um, start with the top left-hand corner, intentionally underwhelming photo of the front of our school. Because I really want to emphasize the other pictures, which are the amazing thing that, things that happen in our school. Um, so Frank from the mid-middle portion of graduate, which, which guides our programming and decision-making, uh, the as we build, uh, build classes, build out new pathways, as Jen Suttl mentioned before. Um, and also as we, you know, look for, towards the graduate, uh, which is featured in our top right-hand corner. We have our two salutarians from this past school year that we're very proud of. Uh, the bottom right-hand corner, just the, so many of our students participating in extracurricular sports and after-school activities, seventy-five percent or more are participating in after-school activities. Uh, the bottom left-hand corner, our theater, theater group, uh, eleven to twelve percent of our population participates in our theater programming. Uh, so we just really wanted to emphasize that it's out of everything that's going on and on in our school and around our school that really matters. Um, from our graduates to the higher levels of participation to the AP courses. Um, lots of statistics to be proud of and we'll be able to speak to a lot more of that in some upcoming slides. Thanks.
Thank you.
So it's important to note that these are the towns of MBSU. So we have our eight-member towns, Barnard, Bridgewater, Killington, Hitzfield, Plymouth, Pomfert, Reading, and Woodstock. What's also important is that we have twenty sending communities to our high school. So when we see that represented not in just a list, but in terms of the context of our map of Vermont, it really shows the impact this district is having on the students and communities that surround us. The Portrait of a Graduate, as Aaron was saying, is really our guiding, um, a lot of vision of what we want for our students. It's important to note that this is not a new portrait. This is our second version of the Portrait of a Graduate. So this has been the basis and direction of our work for more than six years. So I'd like to think that you know, this early is grounded in every classroom from pre-K right through high school. We also have a really strong strategic plan. This is our second strategic plan. Again, we are not new to this process of identifying what our focus areas are. Um, bringing in community members, parents, students, faculty, staff, in terms of setting the uh, guidepost for the next five years. Um, the focus areas for this strategic plan, we're entering year two, enhancing educational programs and diversifying pathways, vibrant homeschool and community partnerships, a culture of belonging, purpose, and joy, and safe and supportive school environments, and finally foundational systems. So the first um, of those focus areas is the programs and diversifying pathways. Some of the goals that we accomplished last year included creating a future U course, looking for post-secondary planning, and getting the map of, um, the mapping of student pathways to the high school.
Okay. So hi, everyone. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself earlier. I'm Jen Suttl. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Patty Kelly, who is our math facilitator, to speak to this slide right here, which is about our math program. Um, and so we share our mission and vision for math in our district where all students will engage with high-quality instruction and experience mathematical success and joy. And Patty wanted to share some of the professional learning and collaboration that's happening this year, much of which has happened in the past as well. And so, and we'll explain some of the wonderful outcomes we're having. So we have four days of math pack TV, lots of grade-level collaboration. Um, we have the middle school and high school engaging with a group that's going to come in and um, talk about instructional practice as well. And then of course Patty is in-school supporting teachers. We have a new math program that we're engaging with this year. We're going to um, be implementing illustrative mathematics through Imagine Learning. Um, and Patty has a wealth of math newsletters that come out monthly for teachers that include all kinds of great fun math problems to engage with, um, and um, also some recent news about math in the world. And then finally, um, she wanted to capture some of the data in the district that we've seen for VT cap. Um, what she did is she traced uh, performance by proficiency fifth grade to sixth grade. So you can see in twenty twenty-four, we had forty-two percent proficient on the VT cap. That same cohort in sixth grade in twenty twenty-five were sixty-five percent proficient. And then same thing for another cohort going from eighth to ninth grade in twenty twenty-four, sixty-one percent proficient up to seventy-three proficient, seventy-three percent proficient in ninth grade. So some success there. I am also going to be Julie Brown tonight. She is our literacy facilitator. Uh, Julie Brown wanted to remind us that we have some guiding documents that we've developed with a strong mission and vision for literacy in our district with a goal of ninety percent of our students being proficient or above proficient and breathing by the end of grade three and maintaining that proficiency level beyond grade three. And you have Snoopy, celebrating some awesome successes. Um, so uh, for grade three, this, this is um, uh, an assessment we do in early literacy. Um, what you can see here is that grade three over the years from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, um, I'd say let's focus on the red bar, which are students needing intensive intervention. Um, students needing intention intervention, as you can see, has gone down over the years, whereas the students who are proficient or above has gone up over the years. And those would be the blue and green bars. So we want to see the red decreasing over time and the blue and green increasing over time. And then um, for VT cap, which is a state level assessment, right? So the one on the left is our local assessment. We want to see that same performance happening in our state level assessments. You can see that from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, we've had um, an increase in performance at the third grade level over time. We are making great strides towards our goals and um, we are very thankful for all the work our teachers have done to make this happen. She has some more good news, which is tenth grade level. Um, so end of year, um, tenth grade percent above intervention level. So we want lots in the blue and green. And you can see that since twenty twenty-two, that has been going up over time. And um, also the other colors going down over time. So the students requiring extra support and intervention. So we can see that the massive lift of literacy work in our district is making a difference and um, we're very excited to share that.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Rafaela. I'm the Director of Technology and Innovation for the District. And I get to continue with the theme of celebrations by sharing some of our most recent VT cap data. Um, and so during the twenty twenty-five assessment, um, we scored higher than we have in every area. So we're seeing improvement across the board in ELA, in math, and in science. And what I want to highlight here is as well, we, we are able to compare it to um, how we did last year across the state. And so you'll see not only did we improve in each area, but last year as well, we, we were faring pretty well. Um, when you compare us to other districts throughout the state. So I think it's safe to say that we're one of the top performing districts in the state. And as Sherry notes, um, we haven't seen you with like this in the thirty-two years that she's been. So some very encouraging information around how we're doing back here.
So for faculty who sat in luckily meetings for years, we looked at our data. It was always stuck. No matter what we tried, and again, well-intentioned teachers, well-intentioned curriculum, we really did a lot of professional development. We've never seen this kind of growth in such a short period of time. But the concentrated energy in terms of professional development, the investment in resources, we used our ESSR money well. We invested in strong professional development and leadership, really scientifically-based resources for mathematics and literacy and really thought about how we use every single minute of our school day. And this is the difference and it's really impressive. We will know the other allegedly scores from the state and how we compete from this year. They're supposed to be released in October.
Sure.
Yes.
Um, well, first of all, congratulations to everybody who contributed to this. Um, the context is helpful. Part related to the context, how many SUs are there? Like
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Okay. So we're tenth of fifty-five. We were tenth of what are we now at the sixty-two percent?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet. Okay. Yeah, I see. Well, we were ten. We've gone up. We should be conceivably behind. Yeah. Great. Great. You guys may have been.
That's slide nineteen. Aaron, the principal of the high school, middle school. Again, uh, you know, I'm not going to go through all those these wonderful data points. Um, but there's a lot here to be proud of. Uh, I want to bring your particular attention to top right-hand corner of the H A C T C Hartford Area Career Technical Center. Uh, this is a program that we're also really proud of and, and really appreciate the partnership that we have with, with Hartford Tech Center. Um, Chris and I were able to spend some time over there this summer, getting to know the staff, see the space as well. Uh, but I just want to bring your attention that of those seventeen seniors that just went through that program, all of them received financial support through scholarships. Um, and I was also able to participate their graduation, which was at the Lebanon Opera House this past uh, spring. Uh, not only was there abundance of scholarships awarded to the students to go to our high school, uh, but our, one of our own students was the a Hartford uh, tech student of the year, Ian Woodward. So Ryan, excuse me, Ryan Woodward. Uh, uh, our, one of our nurses, our nurse's son, um, but so really proud of the APs, the Bible literacy craft, the National Honor Society, proud of all of those things. But I just want to take a moment to just put a spotlight on, on our partnership with the Hartford Area uh, Career Technical Center. Um, it's our partnership with, with, with Hartford that really allows us to meet the needs and different types of needs and interests of all of our students. So from the athletics to the academics, um, to real hands-on, uh, practical work. And all those students, um, finish their programming with real job certifications and they can walk right out the door into the workforce. So so much to be proud of there and really proud of our Hartford students as well. We just, we just rise and shine. Um, just had an amazing year representing our school in that program.
And just to kind of build on that, this is the result, I believe, of really this is the result, I believe, of really being having confident readers, writers, mathematicians. You don't take an AP class unless you believe it gives you success. And I think the push and the drive that you're seeing in our high school students is a really a direct result with the emphasis that we put in literacy, mathematics, and science. And so I think when students feel confident and part of the community, they're willing to take these risks in a really healthy way.
Sorry, one last question. You mentioned a lot of the success and the growth has been due to the one-time use of ESRA money. How do you make that sustainable? That continued trend.
Some other, Jen, do you want to?
A lot of what we invested in was curriculum oriented. So we weren't investing in like people that that we can't afford anymore and have to go. We were actually investing in things that actually like professional development or teachers that will go into
And we've trained trainers, so we have other teachers beyond our coaches who are able to lead some of that training. We this year are piloting a a program where teachers can dive deep into any one of these areas and receive additional rewards for that. It's called thank you, micro credentialed. So it's a part where you take your professional development, you do a lesson study for a year, and then you do a project. So again, building capacity within our buildings beyond our 1.8 coaches for the entire district. So we're thinking about that, Seth. It's really important that we used our money well, and now we sustain that work. Another important part of our focus for our strategic plan is around community partnerships. We introduced Parent Square last year as a communication tool, and now we're piloting family and education together teams in all of our elementary schools. Mary?
That's me, Mary Kuchenberger, Principal at Killington. What I just wanted to really highlight about this slide is that there's all of these schools are reflecting the values of our communities, including environmental science, like VINS partnerships, theater and the arts. There's a Penn Tangle, and we have Killington's World Cup Foundation, snow sports, and outdoor rec. Almost everybody, all of our schools value those, and it's really reflective in our communities. It brings our communities into our schools to share in those values.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Henry. I am the Special Education Coordinator for Woodstock Union High School and Middle School. This slide highlights our community partnerships, and this is just a selection of some of the many that we have. Through these partnerships, we're able to, students are able to explore diverse interests with our community members and collaborate on lots of different projects. You can see some of the interest range from social justice, environment, the arts, and many others. We're really proud of these relationships that we've developed over time because these experiences allow our students to gain real-world life experiences that become part of their educational journey.
Thank you. Our next focus area is around belonging, purpose, and joy. This, last year, we did our fourth annual student leadership summit. In November, we'll have our fifth annual student leadership summit, and also the work that Aaron and his team did last year around paying leadership in the cell phone-free learning environment. Lori here tonight?
I'm here tonight. You're welcome. I'm Lori Biele. I'm the Assistant Principal at Woodstock Elementary School. And this slide highlights how much our district prioritizes student voice and student agency, leading to independent leaders. We offer many leadership opportunities, starting at the younger grades, even in kindergarten, where they can help with bus duty opportunities with staff, and we offer mentoring cross-grade levels. We offer pre-K mentorships. We offer student, just lots of opportunities for students to start feeling like they are making decisions that are based on what's important to them. We've opened up lots of opportunities for them to give student voice for our positive cultures in our schools, student voice on data that we've brought into our older kids in fourth through sixth grade, giving opportunities to make a difference in the schools. Yeah, so this slide just highlights a lot of those opportunities as we're developing leaders as young as pre-K.
Thank you, Lori.
Hi, Chris Landlaw. I'm the principal. So I'm talking about the leadership slides. But before I even start, I'd just like to say, since, I mean, I'm eight days into the high school, middle school, and it's been a great opportunity for me. Thing that I'm most impressed with is really how the students have really stepped up, especially the seniors, as far as being an example for the rest of the school. I've been, you know, a lot of change took place, and a lot of things that had to be adjusted and some different behaviors. And certainly, the idea, the concept of cell phones not being a distraction and interfering with the educational environment, big initiative, obviously. And I think the way the seniors have approached it has really set the tone for the entire school. And I'm really excited to see that that leadership really triggered all the way down to the seventh graders. I'm excited about seeing some of these programs. I obviously wasn't here last year, but what I understand is incredible shadow day where sixth graders come up and kind of shadow students. I know Sherry has a meeting coming up with our social justice, the Leadership Summit is coming up. And I had the opportunity last week to meet with the senior class officers. And just hearing them talk about the school and their ideas, just the way they're approaching it, it's just very impressive. I've been meeting with the student council on Wednesday and looking forward to setting up meetings with the juniors as well, talk about some of their ideas and things that they're looking for and all these big events that are happening. But I think the school year has been off to a fabulous start, and I really, really appreciate the leadership and welcoming feeling that there is in high school, and people kind of really bought into a lot of the things we're trying to do. Thank you.
Hello again, everyone. This slide highlights our participation rate. Aaron already spoke about this. Over seventy-five percent of our students participate in a extracurricular activity. Over ten percent of our students participate in the O. You know, furthermore, beyond just the participation rate, we've had a long successful career in many sports here with lots of state championships. Noted the football team in the center on the bottom last year, you know, as well as many prestigious awards. And so we're really proud of that participation rate and the successes we've experienced.
Great. So as you probably heard, the middle school won an award, and I'd like to say a little bit about how that happened. So about two years ago, the middle school wanted to think through ways that they could improve their program. And the organization to work with for middle-level education is the Association for Middle-Level Education, which is actually an international organization that really has all the research and best practices around working with that particular age group. That organization offers a survey that you can give to parents, students, and teachers to learn about how to improve your program. So two years ago, the middle school decided to do that survey. They received the results back, ninety pages worth of information, and took a year to really dig into what they learned from those surveys and to come up with a plan for how they can improve. And so they then left with Emily to receive some professional learning around how to build belonging through an advisory program at the high school, middle school, to make their advisory programming sharper for this particular age group. And from there, they have built out a new advisory program that they're implementing this year. Through that process, and because they did the survey, they were allowed to apply to become a school of distinction. And the reason why they decided to apply was because they knew that if they didn't get the warrant, that they would receive some incredible professional development from Emily as a part of the program. If you don't get it, we'll help you out. And we had also heard that you have to apply multiple times before you can win. But they applied, and in the first round, they were given the distinction, which is pretty incredible. And really, I just wanted to say that they weren't doing any of this for distinction. They really just wanted to grow. And I think they want everyone to know that. They weren't in it for the accolade. Part of what we had to produce after winning was a video. And so we have the video to share with you. If you have not seen it yet, it makes me cry every time she just hides back there with my tissues. Oftentimes, middle school students are misunderstood, and I think they're often underestimated. They're capable of critical thinking at a high level. They're curious, and I think that's what we do well here. We recognize the promise and the potential in this age group.
We have about one hundred and thirty-two middle school students at our school here in rural Vermont. One of the things that we're really proud of is, you know, our student-to-staff ratio. It's in that setting that teachers really get to know students and students get to know teachers. Because of those relationships, students are challenged, and they have the support they need to overcome those challenges. How I would describe our middle school staff culture is reflective and progressive. The educational team here is actively seeking meaningful and authentic student feedback to inform their teaching, which informs the student experience.
We all believe in the value, the uniqueness, and the importance of this time in these students' lives. We try to think about education as something that's continually evolving, and we try to be creative in what learning looks like in our classes, and we try to connect it to what's happening in the real world. One of the real strengths of our school is that we have a huge variety for our side of our school, things that kids can do outside of the classroom.
Every time it's a new grade, that grade is like my favorite. Like, I think it's my favorite grade every single time.
Every student begins their time in the middle school with a campout and then ends their time in the middle school where they camp out. That initial campout of seventh grade, I think is really important for helping to build the sense of community, and this just further solidifies those bonds.
I feel like from seventh grade to now, I've changed as a person by gaining more leadership skills. I feel like I've generally like matured more. I've become a better friend. Just learning to talk with other people and work with other people is essential for being around other people.
We're hoping that as they develop over time and as they gain more competence, as they become familiar with our school, that they see themselves as having agency, and that they see us as the adults in the building and their teachers as partners with them along their learning journey.
I think I thought that I knew myself really well. I realize that since coming to middle school. I don't have it all figured out, and I don't like know what I want to be exactly when I grow up. And it's after them really powerful, and it sounds kind of scary, but it's also kind of freeing when you're like, I can kind of do whatever I want, and I don't
They are learning so much about who they are as human beings and as people and as members of a community while they're in middle school. And I think that's the piece that is the springboard for the rest of their lives.
Another area of focus is our safe and supportive school environments. I spoke earlier about the Community Care Coordinator position, which is a community-based health-focused position that we work with really closely. And we've been able to complete a number of the facility improvement projects that were highlighted.
So I'm Shayna Kelitsky for this round right now. This is a little snapshot from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it's a statewide survey that happens annually. And
Every three years.
Every three years. And we are actually really proud to report on some of our protective factors that were reported in this report. So compared with Vermont high school students, our high school students report stronger protective factors. So that's protections from factors that would prevent them from choosing risky behaviors, including belonging, school engagement, and post-secondary planning. And so the graphic here, you can see with the backpack, that seventy-nine percent of our students participate in ten or more hours per week of after-school activities versus twenty-four percent for the state of Vermont. And that we have seventy-nine percent that feel they matter to others in their community, and seventy-nine percent plan to attend further schooling after finishing high school. So we demonstrate strong protective factors, including belonging and parental engagement. And that helped us, it's an indicator that we'll have lower engagement in some of those activities.
This is really a huge lift and a big change as someone who is a teacher at the high school, middle school, especially the part of mattering to their community for a long period of time. Our students didn't feel that it was, they were welcome and invited and being part of the town of Woodstock in their own communities. So for seventy-nine percent to believe that they are part of a community, that sense of belonging, a huge piece of our work during COVID, post-COVID, really remarkable. And then like comparison of ten-plus hours per week, twenty-four percent is the state average. We are at seventy-nine percent. Incredibly exciting. We've also, Joe's team's been very busy. New roof on the Killington Elementary School, new playground in Bonner. We can see a whole bunch, the parking lot in Reading is amazing. So our group with the resources we have, we continue to work on and build our facilities. So I might have to do a thought more. This, so for, in our foundation systems, this is where we look at what work we do to make sure that we are continuing to be, have the systems in place to be efficient, and then we're bringing in other partners for work. So you can see that we partner with Dartmouth faculty and students to assess current onboarding systems and making recommendations. In the past, we talked about the relationship we've had with, last year with Stanford University, University of North Carolina, Harvard, MIT, and Dartmouth. Lots of partners coming in and making sure that we're excelling in areas that we really want to work on. And we have a working group that established to review systems and recommendations from the Dartmouth group. So here's just in terms of how do we take care of our faculty and staff, as you can see, our attrition remains in terms of teachers, pretty consistent, even with the buyout last year. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm doing, last time I did this, I just kept going. So I just get a little excited. Even with the buyout last year, we really did still have the same number of teachers coming and going, which was exciting. And a lot of different professional development in a lot of different areas that teachers have taken advantage of. I think it's really impressive to see that seventy-five percent of our faculty have either a PhD or a master's degree. We're in central Vermont, and we bring really well, highly-trained professionals to our team. Equity. So this is another focus area that we've been doing a lot of work with that's outside of the strategic plan.
So one of the most persistent and predictable equity areas that we are working on is the gap in performance between our students on standardized tests, between those who receive free lunch and those who do not. So this is some data that you may have seen before. On the left, you see last winter's star scores, difference between the students receiving free lunch and those who don't in terms of proficiency on both reading and math. And one piece that is encouraging about this is that while there is this large gap in proficiency, if you look at growth on the right side there, you'll see that the two groups are actually very similar in terms of where they were in the growth of this particular assessment. So we have some hope, and we're encouraged by the fact that these students are starting to show growth in similar rates. But our work is not done yet. This shows the most recent gap on the VT cap in the different areas, and you'll see that some of these gaps are rather large. And so we know that this is an area that we're continuing to work on, and you have more to do. What is encouraging about this, which you can't see from this graph, is that in some of these, if you break it down into individual grade levels, there are few grade levels and tests where the gap is virtually nonexistent. So we're hopeful that this will change more over time, and we'll see this. I'm covering for Shana on these two. So some of our other equity data, you know, we're constantly looking, every year we look at our data to see how our students are faring and how different groups of our students are able to access the different resources that we have. So from whether it's a total number of students who receive free lunch, the number of students who are participating in AP classes, disciplinary incidents, these are all things that we're looking at on a regular basis to really look at our systems and make sure that we're serving our students as best as we can, and all of our students. And we also look at our BIOP data regularly as well, just to sort of look at students that we have before us, who we have in our staff and faculty, and how the students are being represented. who we have in our staff and faculty, and how the students are being represented in AP classes and in disciplinary incidents.
So as we think about the work of next year, so we celebrated a lot and we had a lot to celebrate and it was time to do some celebrating. So that was the majority of this presentation. But what's really important is how do we get there and how do we continue to, as Ralph often says, how do we do the last miles of this race? And so a really important piece of work that we've done is around coherence. What we need is consistency of purpose, policy, and practice. Structure and strategy are not enough. When we merged as a district, we began to be able to have that coherence in our work across our buildings. The solution requires the individual and collective ability to build shared meaning, capacity, and commitment to action. And as said in this quote, "When large numbers of people have a deeply understood sense of what needs to be done and see their part in achieving that purpose, coherence emerges and powerful things happen." And I hope our data shows those powerful things can happen. What are we proud of? This was listed by our leadership team and you can see amazing students, our school board support, graduation rates, universal pre-K literacy program, partnerships with higher ed, and so much more. In nineteen, nineteen, in 2019, 2020, that's how old I am, nineteen, okay. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we really began the work of setting the pathway forward. And these were the priorities we had depending upon the areas that we were working on. So we decided to revise that document and really think about ourselves in terms of what are the jobs of each of the members of this learning team. We call this the through line. From the school board, central office, school leaders, teachers, right to the student. And we want every student, pre-K to twelve, to say, "I'm a reader, I belong and I care, I'm a mathematician." Teachers, we want them to use student outcomes to inform instruction, to teach and model social emotional learning, to actualize the math agreements that they worked so hard to develop. As school leaders, we want to engage in professional development and prioritize teacher time and resources. We want to support a culture for a positive school climate. We want to provide a capacity for collaboration and implementation. As a central office team, we want to make sure that we offer professional development, support literacy and math facilitators, advance opportunities for teacher and parent input, and provide access to data. And as Kiria and John really clearly said, where's the board in this representation? And it's true, our board advocates for resources, writes impactful policies, and values the work of MBSU. So we are MBSU and we are all learners. Thank you for the presentation.
T-shirts available, right?
T-shirts are available for members here. And would like, and any who, and any who would like to come in.
Well, thank you very much. John and I have had the ability to see some of this and have given a little bit of input here or there as our opinions were asked. And I just think it brings together a lot of positive things that by themselves you hear, but you don't always see it as a collection of positives. I know that Lindsay Hyde's students started the work as well in gathering a lot of these pieces of information and statistics. And then you all put together a very readable and understandable slideshow that certainly can be used when we need to promote ourselves selflessly as we seek funding for our new school. But thank you very much for all that. All right, we now have to approve some new hires. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten folks. And I prefer to have that done as a group rather than individually. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the new hires, please do so.
I'll make a motion to approve all ten new hires.
And second? Okay, I think Matt got in, but quick, just a second before Anna. Is there anything you want to say, Sheri, about the new hires or?
I think while these are, some of these individuals were late in the hiring process, I'm really excited to bring a real variety again, coming from across the world and offering a deep set of skills all the way until the Sandra who I met last week, who will be moving into Woodstock Elementary in their social emotional transition, I think. Even though we had some late hires, they're bringing a deep set of skills.
Great. I do have one question. I know we were not able to fill the Spanish teacher role at West. So what happens at this point? Do we keep it open and try to fill it, like even if that teacher has to come in like halfway through the school year?
Yes, the position will continue to be open and we will look at viable candidates right through the year. That's what we always do.
Are there any other vacancies like that that the board could hear about? Because I mean, this is great, we have all these new hires, but I'm just wondering, besides that one Spanish teacher at West, were there any other key vacancies that we haven't filled?
There were parts, but there was a half of school counselor shared between Barnard and Reading. We're filling that with a program assistant, the Spanish teacher. I think that's the only ones that I can remember that we're really weren't able to fill off the top of my head.
All right, are we ready to vote to approve? All in favor, please say aye or wait for your end.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much for approving these teachers. We now have committee updates, starting with the finance committee.
All right, we did meet Corinne and Anna and the administration. So it's a little early in the budgeting season to share the results of a draft fiscal twenty-seven budget. But Jim has spent some time on that. And so I just wanted to share with you what some of the drivers are. And just remember, for anyone new to the board, that we're on the fiscal year, you know, twenty-seven will be July first, twenty-twenty-six through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven. So when Jim rolled forward all of the sort of standard assumptions, like what we've agreed to in our collective bargaining agreements for teachers, for support staff, for non-union staff, for, those are like four or five percent. And health insurance was a big one, twelve percent went up. Benefits went up four percent. All other costs generally got about a three percent inflation factor. We're seeing some increases in technology, liability insurance. This was just an exercise to take last year's budget, roll it forward. And it does not yet have input from principals in terms of what additional needs they might have. It also hasn't been entirely scrubbed for cost savings. Like if you compare historical actuals to projections, like have we come under budget in places where we could maybe start to forecast a lower amount? But bottom line is it's about a five and a half to six percent budget increase overall. That's, that's the expenses, that's before our revenues. So we haven't calculated revenues yet. And, you know, I would just say that it's a little early to know what amount we might be in the threshold of the penalty phase. But I think it's fair to say that we would likely end up in that phase again. And the reason is that we were in it last year. I think everyone who remembers being on the board last year, when they reintroduced penalty phase, we were three point five million into penalty. We restructured debt, we took some significant budget cuts that were very challenging and difficult for the staff, the students, the community, and the board to accept. But ultimately, we got to a point where, having been three point five million in the penalty, we ended up just under a million in the penalty. That threshold calculation has not been released from the state yet, so we can't calculate it today. But again, like if, if nothing else changes, we're likely going to be in it again. And so the board just has to be prepared for, like what we would, how we would react to that, what can we tolerate? And as I think about it, from being on the finance committee, just understand, like, it was really challenging last year to make those, those cuts. It would be hard to go back with that sort of level of cuts again, having just done that. And I also think about the fact that in two years, our entire funding formula will change under the new state law. I think, is it two years? Is that right, Jim? And, and so a lot of the tax savings that might come with that law, at least, you know, that was the intent of the law, are, are coming down the road. So I would be, I would be cautious about, you know, trying to dig too deep or take too big a cuts now when there is a solution that the state has come up with that should potentially save some money two years down the road. And we also, like, you could think about that new funding formula and you could start saying today, well, if my pupil spending is higher than what I think the state's going to give us, then we should start preparing now to cut, cut, cut and be right in line with what the state's going to give us. I think the concern I have with that approach is we don't know if the state's going to change it. We don't know what our new district will be, like what other schools will be sharing a budget with. And we don't know things like our daily number of students and any waiting adjustments. So I'm just putting it out there. My statement from the finance committee is just that we will likely be dealing with penalty phase again. But I think we just want to be, you know, careful with how far we go, given how much change is coming in the next couple of years. So in about, what, another two months, Jim, I think we'll be presenting the full board with, or the full budget in early November now. Okay. Back to my athlete.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? All right, thank you. Elliot, policy.
So with the challenge to make our policies impactful, I would hope that at least, some of them may be mundane, but at least hopefully they reflect our, our values. So I'm going to go through, we do have a couple of new ones and then we have three that we would like to adopt. But the first three are for a first reading. And the first one is D two, which is just a word changing, which may seem trivial, that we added course and grade advancement. And the context of this is that to, at our policy meeting in June, we had some parents that were concerned that our policy and our procedure were not sort of matching, or at least the title wasn't, and it wasn't working for them. We told them that we would take this back to, to the leadership. And my understanding is that it went to the leadership administration over the summer and they thought that the procedures were working. And that the mismatch maybe have just been the title that they didn't understand that when you're, it wasn't just for grade advancement, it was also for course advancement and that the procedure works. So what may seem trivial, we just wanted to basically say that that policy does reflect the entirety of it. So I would like to offer that, I would like to have a, put forward for a second reading in October. That's the only change is just the title. Questions?
All right, is there a motion to move this to a second reading in October?
Yeah, we have a motion. Gina, thank you.
I'll second.
John, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of moving the D two, course and grade advancement, et cetera, to a second reading in October, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right, that will move forward.
Okay, the second one is C five, which is behavioral threat assessment. And as I understand it, this is something that was put forward by the AOE and is a requirement and basically is to take our approach to proactive approach to behavioral threat in it. And management doesn't change our discipline or any of our other policies, but it just is more, it gives us a mandate to have sort of a team to do a proactive approach.
Yes.
And so
It reflects our current practice.
Right. And basically, the goal would be to have this adopted by October first. We may, we may not make it by then, because it's only going to be a second read. But anyway, the intention is to have this for a second read for October.
All right, is there a motion to move that forward to a second reading?
Some of them.
What was that? Heather, thank you. Heather moved it and was there a second, again, second from Gina? Any questions? All in favor of moving this behavioral threat assessment team forward, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you.
Okay, and the third one, as for first reading, is D eight, selection of library materials. And if you remember, we recently did pass a D twenty-two last November, which was an update of our library selection materials, which was, went in accordance with the law that was passed last year. There's been an update to it and part of the law was things that weren't going to be taking effect till twenty twenty-five. So this has been updated a bit. And the difference is there is something about the confidentiality of library access, which has been lowered to twelve years of age from sixteen. And the new policy spells out reasons that you are not permitted to, to object to, to removal of, you know, to, to object to. You're not allowed to raise these as a reason to, to remove a book. Or, and so I also wanted to include the access portion that we had in our, in our previous policy. So I combined the two policies. So I'm not just taking their policy, I took the parts of ours that had to do with access and the parts of theirs, which had to do with the rules and I combined them. So that's, that's policy D eight for us. So again, looking for a first, for a second read on October.
Is there a motion to move that forward, selection of library materials?
Could I do discussion?
Yes.
Are the, is either policy required?
They are, but I I believe, I believe the policy is law, to be honest with you. We're a public institution and the policy, when it was passed in twenty twenty-four, was that every library must have this policy in place.
Yes, recently they moved it from recommended to required. And I just want to inquire if the language that's presented has everything from required and then you're saying it has extra, which is allowable, but we can't take out anything that's required. And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't fully review it. My bad, I just wanted to ask.
So there's nothing, nothing taken out from their new one? What we added was, we had a whole, we had several phrases which had to do with access. And in the new one, I mean, you can take a look at the new one that they presented, just sort of vaguely mentioned access. And I thought that our, our older one had a better delineation of the access. So it, nothing, there's nothing missing from the new one.
Thank you so much, Elliot. I appreciate that application. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? All right, can I have a motion to move it to a second reading?
So moved.
Thank you, John. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heather. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you.
Okay, so the next three, I'm just going to briefly mention that we can hopefully vote together because we have done that all along. And this is for adoption of them. So the C seventy-one is possession and administrative emergency medications, which is a new policy. We decided that we weren't going to take away our C thirty, which was just about medications in general, even though the recommendation was, you know, this could replace it. But we went through and we said, no, there's good information in the and we said, no, there's good information in there, and they don't contradict each other. So that's one. Um, the other one, C fifteen, is there were just some change, minor legal changes, uh, legal language um, and the one on cell phone policy, uh, if you remember a few times ago, we had some language we wanted to edit. We did make it broader in scope by saying including but not limit to to the technology. And we just wanted basically ex- express as a board that we value the policy that is or that has been implemented in terms of the phone. So we're putting that in place. It's obviously already exist, in fact, we're putting it as a, as a policy that now supports that. So I will, I guess we can, as we have, I would propose that we prove uh, have all of these for uh, adoption.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt all three policies?
I'll make a motion to adopt all three policies that's presented.
Okay, thank you, John. I'll second. Yes. Okay. Any further questions or discussion that you'd like to comment on before we vote?
I've got a question, Carrie. Um, Elliot, the first one on student medication. Um, you said this was the one that we have, but was it changed just a little bit, and which is why we're adopting it, or?
No, so it, so the one that is C seventy-one specifically deals with emergency medication, but we have one that just talks about, you know, that it, it has to, you know, be written by somebody. I mean, it's not about the emergen- doesn't cover the emergency part. That's what the new one does. For some reason, they said this is a replacement of it, but it's really, it's really not. And they're not, they, they're not in opposition to each other. They're complement each other, so.
Okay. So I've just, so if we, if we already have it, we don't need to adopt it? I guess that's my, my confusion.
Okay, yeah. So that, the first one, the one that we have, does not really cover emergency med- the use of emergency medications.
Okay.
It covered, it covers things about, you know, that you have to have a prescription for it, that where is it stored? Who, who has it? It's not really about emergencies. When the V S B A said, oh, we have a new policy on medication, they said, oh, this replaces it, but it really doesn't. And I've sent it to a number of people throughout the state to sort of get comments on it. They all agree, there's no reason why it should be replacing it.
So you're adding, adding an additional one rather than replacing.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, uh, will somebody make a motion to move um, to adopt these three? We're gonna do that?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All right. I guess we're ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we've moved it forward. All right, we took a lot of votes tonight, I think. Uh, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Katie.
All right, we um, met two weeks ago, and hot off the presses, at that meeting, we had an amendment to our agenda to discuss the waistline issue at the high school, middle school, which Joe alluded to earlier. Um, the committee heard that the cast iron pipe that runs from the kitchen, it's, it's in concrete and then out the building. Um, uh, it failed. So Joe was in there um, trying to get rid of a blockage. There's some sediment buildup. He was trying to break it through. Um, turns out we can't unblock it. Um, and not only can we not unblock it, but there's no, there, there's really no pipe anymore. It's kind of just gone on the bottom. Uh, Joe mentioned that he had some pictures. I think that that's worth sharing. If, if, Joe, are you still there?
Yeah.
I hate to put you on the spot, but I'll keep talking even while you kind of pull them up, because I think it is important to have it on the record and have everybody see these. Um, uh, while he's looking for that, we, we did discuss what next steps would be and options, and it does sound like he did find some basic pricing. We're still working on that. This is only two week old information. Um, we also reviewed some summer projects, noting that there was a sixteen thousand dollar cost overrun at Killington Elementary for one of their summer projects. And then the drama with the Woodstock Elementary School elevator continues. Um, the steel that is used for the elevator came back at about double the original estimate. So uh, trying to figure out how to cover the additional costs for that, because that's not something we, we can postpone anymore. It needs to be fixed to stay in compliance. Um, we also discussed projects that may need to be deferred um, to kind of compensate for these overages that we had. And then um, we also reviewed some policy questions around pets on campus and faculty presence during breaks. And Joe, do you want to talk everybody through what, what we're seeing here?
Sure, um, it's not a great picture here, but um, you can see it kind of looks like a tunnel there. But what I want to point out is right to the bottom where Jim's arrow is. Those are actually pieces of stone. The pipe no longer exists, and that's actual subsurface uh, material that's uh, now poking through the pipe. So um, I think we might have a couple more. Here's a couple, there's a great shot to demonstrate the issues that we're having here. So that's a four-inch waistline. Uh, on your right is a hose that we had used to try to clear some of that. But what I want to point out again is uh, to your left there, that lump that's coming out, that's a separate drain that's coming into this waistline. That's all calcified material. That's seventy years of iron and calcium and mineral buildup that's slowly but surely blocking the pipe. If you look just ahead a little bit, that's the actual pipe itself that leads out of the building. And you can see again, that's a four-inch pipe that's now choked down to about two to two and a half inches. So periodically, probably once a quarter, we get blockage in these areas. And they're generally soft blockages, meaning paper or stuff like that. We were able to clear them out. My intent was to go in and try to remove some of this material, so we wouldn't have to encounter shutting down bathrooms or kitchens. Uh, and when we went in there, um, we couldn't do anything. The pipes are so fragile, so dated, um, we would do more harm than good. Um, so you can see, here's a great shot. You can see the bottom of the pipe uh, is completely gone. And now we're starting to undermine the pipe. It's actually going underneath it. That's soil that's beneath the pipe, and you can still see where it continues, and it's semi-solid going down the line a little bit. So.
Is it going into groundwater?
Uh, it's going into the ground. And some of the building, a majority of it is going out the building. But again, here's a great shot of the pipe. You can see water, uh, it's exiting the building, and again choked off to uh, two thirds of the way. Only a third of the pipe is now open.
Yeah, so we had some people in the public comments, like we were talking about the new building, the bond, that come in and say, well, you just didn't maintain your building. If you just maintained your building, you wouldn't need a new one. So how would we have maintained a seventy-five-year-old iron pipe? Like, is there anything we could have done?
You don't, and it's, it's getting old, people saying that it has to do with maintenance or preventive maintenance, or at the end of the day, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's a seventy-year-old building at the end of its lifespan. Building systems are meant to last thirty or forty years. We're well beyond that. And hats off to the folks that worked in this program before I did. Um, they kept it up and running. It's really quite simple. We're at, at the end of the line here, folks.
And it's five hundred and fifty people using that system every single day. You know, there's one thing about your own house, that you don't have four hundred and fifty adolescents flushing every day.
Living in your own helps the, if you have a building as old as this, as old as this, the brass fittings in your water system have all deteriorated and failed. We replaced them with copper. It's part of maintaining a building. And I don't care if it's a house or a public building, they have to be upgraded and maintained. That's what, what needs to be done here now. It's not lack of maintenance, it's seventy years of use that's worn out.
And I just want to chime in, the reason we found it was because we were properly maintaining it, maintaining it. It was, you know, a, a service provider was in there helping us unclog things and troubleshoot, and that's how we found the problem.
So in terms of replacing it, what does that look like in terms of disruption to the use of the cafeteria or the school?
We certainly wouldn't be able to do well schools in session. And the process now of trying to find a contractor that would be able to do this for us and under a short timeline. I'm thinking next summer. Um, not quite sure, we're still, I'm speaking to everyone who'll lend me an ear to try to figure out the best way of approaching this project, whether it be horizontal boring underneath the school, laying new pipe, or just cutting open the floor and trying to find a different way to connect just the kitchen to our lift stations to get it out. Um, the other question is, how, how far do you go? Uh, my point of view is we can lose the bathroom, we can't lose the kitchen. Do I continue? The, the, so, when I, when I say this whole school is like this, the whole school is like this. We encountered this problem, uh, it's probably about five years ago, on the day of graduation, where I had the same issue. But underneath uh, the solar, I'm on the senior solarium here, we lost the two bathrooms during graduation. Folks were unable to use the, for the same reasons, pipes were clogged, choked down, calcification. Um, again, not due to maintenance, just old.
And has the reading as the second worst building and school building in the state?
Correct. That's where we came out, yeah. Well, I, I think something that folks, I'm not sure if they're aware of, but the state of Vermont will not invest in a building that has greater than sixty percent depreciation. We're above, above ninety percent depreciation. They will not give us a dime to rehab this building.
Where did that put it from? What is, what are you referencing?
That was the um, two thousand twenty-two audit that the state did on um, all of the state, the state ordered all tall buildings in the state. And they indicated that anything over greater than sixty percent depreciation will not be renovated.
So is this replacement out to the curb, or?
Oh, it's, it's in underneath, it's in the building.
Just under the building to the list station, probably in the back. Or maybe to the list station in the front, depending on, you know, what solution works.
Yeah, I, I do know that at some point underneath that building, we transitioned from this copper, I'm sorry, this uh, cast iron pipe uh, to an asbestos pipe, which generally doesn't have the same issues, because it's asbestos and there's not that mineralization. Um, I can tell you, once we exit the building, we have clay pipe. And it's clay pipe until we reach our lift station, and then you push it out to the street.
So how, are we using the kitchen with this thing still clogged?
It's not clogged.
It's, it's now.
It, wh- what happens is periodically, I found every ninety to one hundred and twenty days, we encounter a clog. And it would back up into the kitchen and back up into the bathrooms. This summer, I decided to take the initiative and see if we can't clear some of that calcified materials. Uh, so we sent in basically an auger. We made it about two feet, and I was just like, stop, because you can see the pipes were, were, were knocking pieces of the pipe off. We sent in uh, almost like a hole saw. Folks know what a hole saw is. It's a slow moving. Uh, again, pipes are so fragile, we were just doing damage. We stopped, we tried water jetting it, didn't even touch it. We're just at that point where it needs to be replaced.
But it was clogged, and it's no longer clogged, no longer. Well, how did we get it through? If it wasn't jetted, it wasn't longer.
Blasting out that third of the pipe that's still open.
Uh, like I, like I said, uh, majority of the clogs are soft clogs, so we're able to get through with high power of water and jet it out. Someday, if um, or else something else happens to make down there, and it's solid, and I'm not able to get it out, then it, there will be an issue. Or again, some of that pipe happens to just collapse on itself and into the hole, well, there's not much I can do about that. The other point I want to make out too is that that material that, whether it be a piece of pipe or a rock, if it actually makes it out into one of our lift stations, um, and we suck that up, will
Thank you.
will break the list station. It works by impellers. We actually suck material up with an impeller. I have a brand-new four hundred and fifty thousand dollar list station there, roof, or I hate to lose that.
Any other comments? Well, it's a big problem. I see that. All right, thank you, Katie. Thank you, Joe. Um, negotiations, um, hiring and retention committee update.
No updates.
Yeah, I think we're just waiting for, find a reading from the support staff side. And uh, working groups. Communications, do you have anything not available? Okay, and um, just acknowledgement for all the hard work your group has been doing and getting us out there. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, very great.
Thank you. Uh, the regional hub build working group has some things for us to discuss.
Oh, thanks. First, uh, at the last meeting in August, we issued a call for members uh, with the idea that we were appoint a new regional hub working group. Uh, thanks to the good work of Gina and the communications committee, uh, that got a lot of good publicity. Uh, it's a nice incoming request. Um, and uh, we have, I've emailed you a recommended slate of, of folks, twelve folks to appoint initial appointments. There would be four open positions that we would fill at a later date when those applications come in. But um, you know, the goal was to have one community member from each of the surrounding towns. Two community members from Woodstock, sort of consistent with the, the numbers on the board. Uh, the board chair, you know, up, up to five board members, um, a, a couple of teachers uh, from this, this system and a student. Uh, right now, we have uh, representatives, you know, we have a number of applicants from Woodstock, uh, uh, Barnard, Pittsfield, Pomfret, uh, teachers, uh, students, thank you, Lila. Uh, and board members who have uh, requested. And then there's a number of folks who have said, hey, we're, we're energized by uh, the approach. Uh, we'd love to participate. We don't want to be named official kind of voting members, but we would like to work behind the scenes. And so they have uh, reached out and gotten engaged and are participating in different, different ways. So I have a slate of, of folks that are in front of you to recommend to, to appoint. Um, that, that's up for consideration. Happy to read through that if, if you'd like. Uh, but does dinner even receive the dime?
Yes, looks like people have.
Is there a motion to consider the slate that I recommended? Would you like me to share that on the screen? Can someone who has access? But I, I think like, again, the, the purpose of this was really to drive a, a, an inclusive process. And to make sure we had a voice and representation from every town uh, participating. And then we brought, you know, folks that actually had special expertise around.
Yes, you would have to join the meeting via.
Sure, I'll sure.
You can share, I guess, I can't go to email this. Since, meanwhile, uh, has a question or a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just wondering if there's plans to um, communicate this out via like the front porch forum. I was expecting um, it to go out through the Redding Front Porch Forum, just so that our whole citizen group was aware of it. Gina and I brought it to the select board. Um, and if that's not on the um, plan list of communications, if you could let me know, and I will post in the front porch forum, um, you know, either something that was shared in another town, or um, I can uh, write up my own if, if there's not a template available.
Yeah, I'm gonna get back to you on that. We've had a little bit of problem getting onto that particular front porch forum, not others. So um, we're trying to figure out what's going on there. Uh, we've had, you know, six different stories break that we haven't been able to get onto the front porch forum in Redding. So um, without further ado, I, I'd love it if you'd help me figure it out.
Yeah, let me know what I can do to support. I've got a, a school board account for a front porch forum for Redding. So let me know, uh, we can connect and figure that out.
Will do, because we're gonna have more news after tonight.
You don't say. Thanks, Gina.
You bet.
Uh, yeah, I would respectfully request that my name be taken off the list. I'm uh, I was on the new build committee, and I'm certainly happy to contribute as needed. Uh, but I think for this working group, there's far too many people, in my opinion. So I'll probably be joining some meetings, but um, won't be a, an official member of the committee.
Great. I just took you off.
And you can put me on for writing.
I think you were, I did, so I, so we have board members listed as um, Seth, Regina, Josh, Seth, and Karen.
Okay, good.
With one TBD, there's one opening now. Um, Bob, you were put on because Um, Bob, you were put on because you were nominated by the other Bob who said, the only, you know.
Well, close.
I, I got the Bob, I got Bobbed.
The Bob's a representative. And so the bold, um, are the ones, individuals that you are suggesting.
Suggest.
How many board members do you want?
Um, up to five.
I mean, I'm happy to do it, but then you're gonna have two people from Plymouth.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
You don't currently have a Plymouth representative.
Well, so, but that's what I'm saying, but, well, Josh is.
I mean, Josh, sorry, Josh would be, yeah.
So if you don't want, it's up to you.
It, it would be helpful if the folks in the towns that right now don't have a community person, um, on there, but would maybe suggest some names or talk to some folks in your towns, that would be very helpful. Um, that would include Bridgewater, Callington, um, Plymouth Board Member Anna Redding. Uh, not a board member, but a citizen and a writing as well. And we thought it would be perhaps nice to have a high school teacher. So I don't know, um, Sherry, if you want to take that to them or, or are on to do that?
Because that's her writing background.
Ryan's in school.
Paid for in middle school, yeah.
So if you could see if there's a high school person or a hybrid. Okay, um, all right, are we, uh, ready to vote? No further discussion?
And, and so this vote would be to appoint the people involved, knowing that more names are coming.
Yes, hopefully wrap it up in October.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the appointments, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Um, Sir, you had a question?
She's just, I think she was voting.
Oh, okay.
No, I voted yes, I voted yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Seth, and I know this.
Uh, I have two more quick updates. Uh, one, just flagging for everybody, the state of Vermont announced the rollout of the state aid program for school construction. Um, uh, the Department of, uh, Education gave a presentation a couple of weeks ago. Building off the legislation from Act, uh, seventy-three. Uh, it says that, uh, schools will be eligible, uh, for a minimum of, under the new program, which is set to begin in July of next year. A minimum of twenty percent of construction costs. And there will be, uh, uh, additional bonus incentives and emergency aid up to an additional thirty percent. So it appears, you know, uh, that there could be substantial state aid. Now, uh, there's a lot to do to make this program happen. Uh, the legislature, well, and the governor have both indicated they plan to fund it, but they need to do that. Um, and, uh, that, that needs to happen this, this session. You know, I think my opinion on this, which I, 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 is, is shared by the folks who have been participating in the working group, is that we want to be first in line, uh, if we can for those funds. And so that speaks to the urgency, not only that, that Joe and, and Jim are expressing tonight and, and Katie, um, from the buildings and grounds report, but, um, you know, I think it's a, it's, it's incumbent upon us to articulate how we fit within the new redistricting plan, how we can serve as a model regional hub. Um, and how our capital plan, uh, i- is aligned, uh, with, with Act seventy-three. I think we, we're, we're well positioned to continue our leadership and, and be a good partner to the state. And so, you know, just, just flatten that, um, which could make a difference in, in a presentation to, to the community. That's number one.
Can I just add one thing to that, Seth? Um, I sent out to the board members a, um, a forward from Elizabeth Burrows, who's a school board member in Windsor, um, southeast. And I was also a, a representative, representing, um, her community. And, uh, we are all invited, our board, their board and Hartford School Board are invited to a joint meeting to discuss potential mergers and/or what, what we, how we would see ourselves and position ourselves and that type of thing. It will be, uh, held at the Heartland, um, library, but it's also available through Zoom. So I've sent that to you all and I, I know quite a few board members had already, um, responded with interest, uh, because I saw, um, the names on the, the email. But, um, if, I would hope that a lot of you would be able to attend one way or another. And, um, I don't think I can drive at that time, but if anyone wants to drive me to Heartland, if they'd like to attend.
Absolutely, okay.
I'll make a motion that someone should drive, Carrie.
And I'll be there.
Yes, yes, there I'm not in charge, so I can actually talk a lot. Um, but, um, so that's happening. And, um, I think, uh, that Sherry is gonna presenting, be presenting, uh, one of the task force at the end of the month. Uh, Gina and I are planning to go to that meeting, um, and we would consider making a public comment. And we can, if you have thoughts on that, any board members have thoughts as to what we might say. I'm happy to have you send some thoughts our way. Because, um, we do have the opportunity and the, the public comments are being taken down and written and they're published on the, uh, on the AOE website. So that goes along with Seth's, uh, next, uh, right, plan.
Yeah, so the, the third thing is, um, we've been discussing, and I think we discussed it the last meeting, the, the urgent need for the legislature to decouple capital debt with the education spending formula. Um, as you, as you all know, or you may not know, it's, it's holding us, not only us back, uh, but every district in the, in the state from making needed capital improvements. There was an article this week about Champlain and, um, it, it's needing to advance some, uh, uh, significant capital expenditures. So this, uh, was an idea that came out of a brainstorm with Sherry, um, who is in regular conversations with, um, districts around the, the state. Uh, that we all call on the legislature to convene a special session this fall to pass emergency legislation, decoupling capital construction debt from per pupil spending. Um, we drafted a letter and, um, that is, uh, we, Sherry's received a, a lot of positive feedback, um, from districts, uh, that are experiencing, then in the same shoes that we are, which is every one of them. And, um, you know, I think the, the, the consideration for the board tonight is to take a look at that letter. And, uh, do we vote to pass it? And do we vote to sign it? And to join, and to join this, this burgeoning coalition to call on the legislature to, to help us, um, not be penalized for taking care of our buildings? Yes, ma'am.
I just had a little suggestion as to the people being addressed to.
Go ahead.
Could you, if any, special note to get all three of our senators' names specifically? And our one representative in the two list?
Yes.
Please.
Corinne, I think we're calling the leadership, I mean, here's the thing, I think we're calling on, yeah, this is, this is discussion, I mean, I, I think we're calling on the leadership of the Senate and the House. To, and, and the governor, the, the three legislative leaders, really, the three branches to take it up. And I think this would be something that, yeah, we should, every district that signs it should send to their individual represent, representative.
But these guys are sitting on this.
Yeah, and so every time a district signs on, we should add CC to their local members. Would that be, would that, uh, address your concern?
No, because I want the names of those three senators and one representative on this letter.
I see. Uh, sure.
Okay.
I don't have a, a issue with that.
Especially since one of them voted against our resolution the last time. Just leave it there. Who shall not be named. Um, Corinne?
Um, yeah, just to comment on that, maybe, maybe the, uh, the Sinis, whoever they are, representatives should be, should be CC'd. Um, but I guess my question was about, do you, are you aware of? So my understanding, looking at this, is that it's a template that then other districts could also take and, and, uh, to their boards and hopefully have their boards, you know, vote to approve it in the same way, is, is, is that right? And are you aware of other districts that are looking at bringing this to their boards to become a, to sign on to it yet? Or is this just the very beginning of that process or am I misunderstanding?
Uh, no, it was a great question, uh, and I defer that to Sherry, really, I think, I think we are, we would be one of the first, if not the first to, to sign it. I think there are interests from, there's interest from dozens. Um, but they have, are just beginning to meet. So it was just fortuitous, uh, that, that we were, uh, early in the situation. Is that, actually, Sherry?
Right, so I shared it with members of the, uh, Vermont Superintendent's Association trustees. And there were individuals that are willing to sign and write into their board. Um, we have an all members meeting on Thursday, I'm on the agenda to present this letter and offer it to other the superintendents to bring to their boards if they too want to pursue this.
And that's on a Tuesday next week?
It's this Thursday.
So, you know, look, one of the things, if, you know, I, I think, Corinne, I'm just gonna guess that some of the things behind this, I don't think we want this to be a, um, NDSU initiative, right? We want to be part of a coalition because we're as strong as our numbers are. And so, you know, one strategy that the board could pursue is to say, hey, how do we feel about this? Let's get our changes in tonight, let's get set up to sign, let's see how the meeting with Sherry goes. And then let's pile on when there's a more of a coalition. Or, you know, I think we become the first and just sign it and get everybody else. You know, nobody in government wants to go first, everybody wants to go fifth. Um, you know, so, I, you know, but I, I, I kind of, I, I'm, I'm playing, I'm just arguing both sides.
Right, yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't have an issue with being the first at all. I just sort of was trying to get a sense of the timeline, because, yeah, it seems like, um, you know, and I, and I don't know when boards have their meetings, but, uh, you know, the sooner the better, obviously. But, you know, depending on meeting schedules, um, you know, I, I, I'm just wondering if there's a goal in terms of like, we feel like this will be strongest if we have, you know, X number of districts signing on.
Yeah, I think you want to say at least a dozen or a, a dozen districts, or, you know, I think that's the headline, a dozen, two dozen, three dozen, you know, that's where we want to be. You know, whether we can get there, I don't know.
One.
Yeah, I mean, it might be till early October before those districts are having their meetings to sign it. And, and maybe I, I, you know, maybe that's okay to send it at that point, but maybe that feels late.
It could create momentum too.
Yeah.
A drum roll.
Yeah.
Gina, one thing that you should know is, is we're planning on putting a press release out tomorrow that has to do with this precise decision tonight. And the comparison, you know, to, to this move, would be the announcement we made on BOSIS. And we, we took the position that being first is, is highly successful. And darned if we didn't have three major outlets pick that up, not, and in addition, the standard and the mountain time, so, so with one fell swoop, the fact that our superintendent has worked for five years and when she signed that thing, she became the founding member of not only BOSIS, but that particular cooperative. So it was a double hit. And I gotta tell you, education reporters like Allison Novak took note. And the story that she wrote ended with, one of the people on the, uh, the restructuring task force, literally saying he was all ears because he was willing to think about other ways of formulating districts that would possibly take into account the excellence of a district like ours. It's a powerful, powerful message. And what we want to do tomorrow is get a release out as soon as possible. I mean, it's gonna have to circulate around to people like Sherry and the communications folks and everything. But we think that just asking our hat into the ring as the first district to do something like this and then use that to make other districts aware that they can sign, means we may actually be making more than one announcement. And remember, we're driving towards September the twenty-ninth, when Sherry's gonna be presenting the whole concept of BOSIS in front of the entire state redistricting task force. So I just, I just thought I'd throw that on, on the table.
Uh, all right, uh, thank you, Gina, um, Bob? You're on mute, Bob.
I think Anna had her hand up first.
Okay. Go ahead, Anna.
Thanks, Bob. I would have been happy to pass off to you. I'm, I'm wondering if it'd be helpful for our board members to, uh, give us a rundown about what the benefits are of separating capital investment funds from the gen ed fund.
We don't pay two X for capital. Uh, right now, this is in, if I, but I'm gonna defer this to Matt, why am I answering this? Geez.
Yeah, so previously, this was not part of the budget. So you could raise a bond across your towns that are in your district to build new school buildings. And then when the state would calculate, uh, our per pupil spending, it was our, our annual operating budget. And so any repayments made to, to take out bonds didn't count, uh, against that per pupil spending. And therefore, didn't put us into things like the penalty phase and the threshold. So you had an incentive, you, you know, to get cheap bond financing from your, your towns and fix your buildings. But with the way they made it part of your actual, like, the repayment of those bonds now gets included in our education expense, which therefore gets included in our per pupil calculation, which therefore triggers the penalty phases. And our, um, taxpayers in our communities, you know, would have to give two dollars for every extra dollar that we spent in penalty. So we were all, when this happened, I mean, everyone on the board at the time was like horrified because it was such a huge disincentive to borrow money and fix your school buildings. And, uh, Sherry thought that it was a complete mistake, but, but learned that maybe it wasn't because they didn't want people building new buildings right before passing legislation that would, uh, change our, you know, our school districts. So does that answer it, Tom?
Uh, yeah, so it was more for the general understanding, um, I feel like I've been in enough, so I appreciate you putting words. So just for everybody's, uh, take home message, uh, if we were to build a new building, that currently would go against our cost per pupil, which, uh, is caught, is, uh, held against us when we reach penalty phase. So if we were to fund a new building currently, it would, uh, not only would be paying that X amount of dollars, we'd actually be paying fees on top of that because we've now further dug ourselves into that penalty phase with, uh, with rebuilding costs. Thanks, Matt.
Wow.
Yeah, is the plan here to vote in favor of sending this letter and then sending this letter? Or is the plan to wait until, you know, a dozen other districts get a chance to read this letter and agree to send it, like, all en masse? I, I think the latter will not work if we're trying to get them to form a, do a, an emergency session. Am I missing something here?
No, I think, I think, uh, I think the goal is, if I'm correct, that we would vote to, um, sign it tonight as Mountain View Supervising Union and then start pushing it out to other boards and superintendents to bring to their boards, um, and to get a response.
But, but send it, send it to the governor, send it to the legislature as soon as it's signed.
I think so, don't you?
Yeah, I think it's a rolling thunder, right? Every time a new district signs on, there'd be a message sent.
I agree, I mean, if, if we're gonna wait until, I think we should send it, if we're gonna vote on it, send it immediately tomorrow.
Any, uh, any further comments or questions? Oh, Anna?
Uh, not that this would be my inclination, but I just wonder if there's space to hold off, uh, for this meeting on Thursday, if that would provide any benefit. Um, first, I'm seeing a no shake from Sherry, um, if there'd be any feedback from Thursday that would help us, uh, either garner more support or, um, if that's a moot point and there's nothing to be learned on Thursday.
Two weeks out.
Two weeks out.
It won't be a point of discussion. It will be an opportunity, and I'll share the letter. What I feel, especially after the presentation we showed earlier, we have an amazing story to tell that brings huge responsibility. We have the ear of the Agency of Education. We have the ear of legislature. We're being invited to offer what we're working. That response, that brings responsibility, and I think this letter is evidence of the responsibility of taking the lead, something that's really important, and that does impact students. So that's how I read this. We we're doing well. Our students are amazing. And we now have a new responsibility to take a lead on those things that are holding us and other districts back.
Absolutely.
And the only thing that I would, my two cents for whatever, you know, in case you care. I think the people she presents to on Thursday are gonna be much more likely to sign if somebody else has already done it.
Yeah, and I was just commenting, I was gonna add on top of the 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 fuel of not only is our our students doing well, and our building is way past sixty percent beyond its livable space and and the emergency need with what we saw tonight with the pipes. And we've know this has been an ongoing issue that I feel like we're checking all the box to 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 go ahead and move forward. And I'll go ahead and make the motion if that's okay, to sign and send this letter.
I second it.
Okay, seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor of signing this letter, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? All right, thank you, everybody for doing that. And we'll get on, get some traction going. Seth, did you have anything else?
Our next meeting will be on the Monday the twenty-second. We're gonna try to, I'll reach out to the appointed folks, but that is the planned day. And and that that that's all, because I lost my notes.
It's dangerous. All right, thank you. Are there any other working group updates? All right, our next job is to approve the minutes from August fourth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
There are second.
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? All right, thank you. We don't have any resignations, so we now do have a public comment. If there's any public comment, you're welcome to make a comment now. All right. So at this point, we are going to have to make a motion to enter Executive Sethon for the purpose of a contract discussion.
Thank you all. Thank you, Myra. Thank you to all the folks.
All right, we need them.
I'll make a motion to enter Executive Seth.
There are seconds.
Second.
Should we all vote? Aye to?
Yes, we need to vote. Okay, great. So we need a motion to I can't, what was the board?
I'll make a motion to add a point five admin position to the current special educator position seven through twelve.
And I will second.
I'm gonna second it. Any further discussion? All in favor of moving this to a point five administrative position, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm going.
All right. What was that, Josh?
I'm doing the same for the vote.
Abstaining? Okay. All right. All right, then I think the last thing we have to do before we exit is any reflection on what we did well and what could we do better? Well, I think we did well tonight. Got through a lot of things, appreciated the presentations. And I think we also had constructive and helpful discussions as well. That's my reflection. Would anyone like to validate that? No, never mind. Are we ready to adjourn? Yes, I sense that we are. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm.
Seth, did that one?
Sure.
And who seconded it? I'll second it. Gina seconded it. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anyone abstaining? The ayes have it. Thank you all very much. We got a lot of things to do in the next month. Thank you.